Good evening and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners' Public Hearing on Proposed Amendments to the County's Land Development Code. First, the Board will hear -- hold a public hearing to consider the adoption of amendments to the Land Development Code. Following the adoption, public hearing, the Board will hold the first of two public hearings on amendment to the Land Development Code. Following the conclusion of the LDC Amendment Public Hearings, the Board will commence its Comprehensive Plan Amendment Public Hearing. This time, Israel Monsanto from the Development Services Department will take us through tonight's LDC Amendment Public Hearing Agenda. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioner Israel Monsanto, Development Services. This is the second public hearing for the Land Development Code text amendments, round one, 2024. We have nine items for tonight's presentation. The first item is LDC 230138. These vaping retail shop standards add development standards to the location and permitting of establishments that sells vaping products within 500 feet of public or private elementary, middle, and secondary schools. Will require a conditional zoning permit to be approved for the establishment within 500 feet of public or private schools. Vaping retail shops within 500 feet of a school would be a permissible conditional use in commercial neighborhood, commercial general, commercial intensive, and manufacturing districts, as well as planned developments, which permits uses allowed in the zoning districts mentioned it. Will prohibit vaping retail shop from with more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products within 500 feet of public or private schools. And vaping retail shops with more than 20% of its total monthly retail sales of vaping products located within 500 feet of public or private schools that were permitted use and lawful operation by the effective date of this amendment would be deemed illegal nonconforming use. Section 611 of the Land Development Code will be amended, and this concludes this presentation.
I thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Seeing now Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I want to thank staff for all their hard work. This was a long, long road to get here. And I also want to thank my colleagues here on this board. This is a big win for kids. We are going to do whatever we can as a board collectively to protect our youth from this product, and I think this is just such a great start. I hope that the legislature takes a look at this and takes this up statewide. But again, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank my colleagues here on the board, and I'll move for adoption.
Second, we got a motion to adopt by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Myers. And Commissioner, I want to thank you for your leadership on this item of the high school daughter. I certainly appreciate it. No other comments? Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item.
Next item, LDC 230311, Comprehensive Plan Amendments with Related Resoning Applications and Planning Commission Resoning Report Filing Deadline. This amendment will modify the procedure for amendments to official zoning atlas of the Land Development Code, specifically the consideration and final decision by the Board when resignings or major modifications, applications are related to applications to amend the Comprehensive Plan. Also modifies the filing date for reports prepared by Planning Commission staff for hearing applications for the official zoning atlas and resignings. Again, this will establish that application proceedings in accordance with the Land Development Code Part 100300 that are contingent on a request to amend the Comprehensive Plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County will be deemed withdrawn and no further effect in the event that such requested amendment to the Comprehensive Plan is denied by the Board and no further proceeding or action will be required. The other change is that it will eliminate the 12-day calendar requirement for the filing of reports with administrator by Planning Commission staff for land use hearing officer application. Instead, the filing of these reports will be in accordance with the hearing master schedule adopted by the administrator. That concludes this presentation.
At this public hearing, would anyone like to speak to this item? Can we have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. No comments? Please record your vote, 23-0311.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item.
Next item, LDC 230312, Yard Waste Air Curtain Incinerator. This amendment will modify the standards for yard waste air curtain incinerators or ACI facilities. The amendment will distinguish between commercial facilities, which has set yard trash generated off-site for incineration, and those are temporary and accessory to the clearing of land limited to the incineration of yard trash generated on-site only. Will specify that commercial facilities will only be permissible as a conditional use in the commercial intensive and manufacturing zoning districts. The facility will be limited to the incineration of yard trash only, and open pile burning will be prohibited. Will also provide for minimum required setbacks along boundaries and roadways, increased yard for residential development or zoning, and required screening by a solid fence. Facilities that are temporary and accessory to land clearing for site development will be permitted in all zoning districts as a conditional use. Commissioner, you have two options in the backup. One is for the conditional use approval. The other one is for the plan development. Staff is recommending to do the conditional use approval option. Since facilities that will not meet the zoning for the CI or M will still be required to resort to a plan development anyways. And that concludes this presentation.
All right, thank you. A public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Commissioner Kemp?
I'd just like to move approval and pleased that we had this because I know this was a really contentious item that we worked really hard on and had this room full, and it would have been a really awful thing for the Carrollwood neighborhood, the Citrus Park neighborhood, had this been allowed in that area. So this is a -- this will give us a warning, and we can know if it's appropriate or on a temporary basis for these to be located.
Second.
We got a motion to approve, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. And yeah, Commissioner Kemp, it's dead on. I'm the one that initiated this. We were faced with a nightmare situation in the neighborhood in my district, and thankfully things worked out. But this will go a long way toward preventing that from happening again. And I want to thank staff for their work on this. Did you want to speak? Come forward, sir. Welcome.
Yes, I'm George Farkas. I own one of these air curtain incinerators. I've had it since '05. It's on agricultural residential land. It's been permitted through EPC. It's been permitted through Solid Waste for 19 years. I can understand y'all want to change this rule, but it'll put me out of business. So I was wanting to see if I could be grandfathered in, being I've been here for night -- or been there for 19 years.
Adam, does this want to propose impact?
Yeah, so we have spoken with Mr. Farkas, and what we've identified is that the site, his facility, was never permitted through the county from a land use standpoint. The site has never received a conditional use or any other approval for the site. We -- there is under the either option, and I understand that the move was to have the conditional use in MI and, excuse me, MNCI, there is still the opportunity for any site, regardless of its zoning, to pursue a planned development zoning and could provide a site-specific approval for use of an air curtain incinerator. So that is an option available to him. We have looked at his situation, and under the operation of the Land Development Code, it doesn't -- we don't believe that he's eligible for recognition of a legal nonconforming use, as it was never legally established. So planned development is one option. If the Board would like to consider other ones, we could have some suggestions.
Commissioner Winstall.
What do you mean you were permitted through the EPC?
I was permitted through EPC and Solid Waste in '05.
So what does that mean, Mr. Gormly?
So they -- their EPC issues an environmental permit for air curtain incinerators, and can confirm that he does have a permit through EPC. What he didn't have was a permit through the county for this location to operate as a permanent air curtain incinerator that will have basically customers coming to the site to provide materials.
And he's been conducting business to the public for 19 years, though, with no sites?
No one's ever said anything of it.
Okay, sir, we're having a discussion. Hold on.
Can confirm that he's had the site permitted through EPC. I don't know about the nature or the frequency of the business, but I do hear that his testimony that he has maintained.
I guess my concern is that how much is a PD? I mean, they can be very expensive.
Yes, sir. They're in the realm of $10,000 for an application fee for the PD.
I'm full -- I understand, even on my campaign trail, you guys handled it right before the elections, but it was very contentious, and I'm fully in favor of restricting it. I know it was going to be near a preschool or an elementary school or something like that. Wasn't it that they went through the state or something that has permitting on these air curtains that created that issue?
They were being permitted through EPC, and it was delegated authority from the state, and that was the -- they were operating under state rules, but through delegated authority to EPC. A suggestion, if the Board would like to --
Please.
You know, we think that, you know, a site-specific review might be beneficial. Understand the financial situation and the challenges that that may pose. It's not unprecedented for the Board to approve a waiver of a fee for an application and allow that application to go through the review process. We, in fact, recognize that in an amendment here for existing businesses. So that may be an option that would obviate that application fee burden on Mr. Farkas, and we could look at the site with specificity.
I'll hear you, and also, I would just suggest that if we are waiving the fee, it would probably behoove you just to protect you in the future if the Board does support it, so nothing else comes back around, and you're just fully in compliance. So yes, sir.
Does that need to be included, Adam, in this motion, or is that a separate motion? Or how do we handle that?
I think it could be a separate motion.
Okay.
Motion to adopt this, and then separately, just have a motion to waive the fee for this site.
I guess we'll hear the first motion first.
Okay. Commissioner Cohen, do you want to add anything?
I was just going to suggest, and I'm fully in support of this type of a motion, that we give him some amount of time to be in compliance and at least exempt him temporarily from what we're going to do, so he can operate and get this straightened out.
Okay. Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's exactly what I was actually going to ask. Is that right, what Commissioner Cohen said? So we can exempt him while we're, in essence, going through that permitting process? He can still operate?
Yeah, I think the intent for the Board is that he be allowed to go through that plan development process, take that and not -- you know, there's no enforcement action or anything that's being contemplated or visited on Mr. Farkas now. We'll take this direction as allowing him to go through the process without being interrupted with any type of enforcement action. And just as a suggestion, a period of six months. It's certainly a reasonable time to get the application together, get it filed, get it in with us, and then once that application is in, it will have its own timeframe associated with it.
Okay. Well, I mean, I'll move to waive the fee and to give, as long as Mr. Farkas can still operate until the permitting process is over with a deadline of six months. Is that what you want us to have?
Six months to have the application in, and it should give him --
Again, should that be included in this motion or separate motions?
This is separate from adoption.
All right. So let's adopt this first, and then we'll make that motion. Please record your vote on the adoption.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Commissioner Owen.
And my motion, as to Mr. Farkas' property, is to waive the fee, allow him to have six months and to operate business as usual until the permitting process is over.
Second.
Okay. Motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cameron Cepeda, Commissioner Kemp, do you want to add anything?
Yeah, and I'm totally in agreement. I just wondered if there are any other outstanding that you know of, outstanding issues such as this.
We're aware of one others in LUTS, and we have reached out to them and made them aware of this amendment, and they're -- I don't believe that they've come here this evening, and their communication to us was that that was not a significant part of their business, and they may just not pursue having a permanent air curtain incinerator. And those are the only two that we're aware of currently.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Got a motion or second? Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Thanks, coming down, sir. All right, next item.
The next item, Commissioner, is LDC 240340, Live Local Act, LLA Administrative Approval and Land Use Restriction Agreement, LURA, process. This amendment will implement the Live Local Act recently created by Senate Bill 102, and establishes the standards and administrative procedure for new projects developed under the Live Local Act and the Land Use Restriction Agreement. Live Local Act projects will still adhere to all other limitations and requirements contained in the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and the proposed LDC regulation for multifamily developments in areas zoned for such use. The amendment will provide the criteria and development requirements for a project to qualify under the Live Local Act in the county, consistent with the Live Local Act statute, establishes the procedure for review for new projects in the county, and the supplemental requirements by applicants and internal process by Development Services Department and the Affordable Housing Services. And this concludes this presentation.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to this item? Please come forward. Each person will be given three minutes. Good evening.
Melissa Nordbeck. I've been following Live Local with other counties, and I did notice that Pasco County put together a group to travel to Tallahassee that actually got the law amended so they could opt out. So Pasco County has opted out of Live Local, and other municipalities and county governments have put moratoriums on building before, until they can get a better grasp on what Live Local, how it is going to affect them. So I don't know what my county government has decided to do about Live Local, other than this document, which seems to be a little reactive instead of proactive. So I'm hoping to hear more from all of you about what the plan is to address Live Local.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Next.
Hello, my name is Dave Coleman, and I agree with her 100%, and that's exactly what I was going to say. It seems to have no value whatsoever. I couldn't understand where it was going in our Affordable Housing Advisory Board. It was mentioned a couple of times. There doesn't seem to be any significant advantage towards housing or homeless or to create actual real affordable housing. And if Pasco County can get rid of it, so can you guys. Thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Coleman. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you, and I agree with you also, but this was something that the legislature enacted. I think there's some misconceptions about what Pasco County was able to do, and I've talked at some length with Mr. Gormley about this. So I just wonder if, for now, you can just address some of what we have talked about before.
Yes, just briefly, just for the -- there is no opportunity to opt out of Live Local as the preemption that it provides over height, density, and use for certain affordable housing projects. The exemption, the opt-out that I understand Pasco County recently approved was to a portion of the tax exemption for affordable housing projects. There is a new legislation passed this year that allows certain jurisdictions to opt out for affordable housing projects that are at the 80% to 120% AMI. For clarity on this amendment, this amendment does not enable Live Local. It has its own enabling under state statute, so adoption of this amendment will not -- adoption or nonadoption will not affect the applicability of Live Local within Hillsborough County.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for that clarification. And, you know, it's a bit mind-boggling because we've had so many conversations about Live Local on this board. We've discussed moratoriums. We've discussed every possible thing that we could do to get out, to challenge Live Local. One of the biggest problems is the amount of damages if you attempt to do that. There, I want to say, are they treble damages if there's some, if we show in any way that we get in the way or preempt Live Local? I want to say it was somewhere around there. So we have tried everything to the public, but this, we are preempted by the state legislature on this. What Pasco County -- I went myself to Tallahassee and spent time in Tallahassee with the Pasco County Commissioners. So trust me, this board has been very, I think, outspoken as to our position on Live Local, but this is just one of those scenarios where our hands are tied, and absolutely, this is reactive. I'm the one who brought this because we need to conform. We need to, until the state legislature makes any changes, we've got to live within Live Local. No pun intended. So thank you.
Commissioner Winstall.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up, too. I also went to Tallahassee. I can tell you that many members of our own local state delegation are in favor of changing it to making it more practical, less imposing on communities that wouldn't expect it to be there. And just to reiterate again, there is, because I've been very vocal about my opposition of it at every single meeting, it seems like, and there's no way, if there's some magical stick that I didn't find for us to opt out, it doesn't exist, right?
That's correct.
Now, can we opt out of the property tax?
There is a new law that's become effective July 1st, and that provides for an additional tax exemption for projects that are at the 80% to 120% AMI income level, and it does provide an opt-out process for local governments, certain local governments.
Are we one of those certain local governments?
I believe, based on the information I've seen, I believe that we do fit that criteria. We're in the same geographic area as Pasco County, and the standard is whether there is a surplus of units in the 0 to 120% AMI, and that's positive for Hillsborough County the same as it is for Pasco. So yes, there's an opportunity for the Board to consider.
And when and what do you need for me to bring that forward?
We can take direction to bring a report or information on how that process would, what it would take. It takes adoption of a resolution by the Board, basically opting out. So it is a prescribed --
But that can be done later after we --
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, sorry. I was not clear on that.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp?
It's one of the things I was intending to do. It's one of the things I was intending to do, and kind of researching what the possibilities were with this. I also would like to remind those who talked about the moratorium, because I was, I know that that came up here, too. And we were barred by the state legislature for a couple of years from any moratorium here, although they could have them in other counties, because we were within, like, 100 miles or something like that of the hurricane, and it touched the south of Hillsborough County. So there was a, we were told that we couldn't do any moratoriums here, and they finally included what counties could or what counties were included in that 100 miles, but that took a year or two before Hillsborough County was excluded from that. So that was also, I was trying to think, I knew that we had discussions about that. So we have looked at this. I have really particularly had some discussions about what we could do with regards to this. I was aware of what Pasco County did. It is, even in Pasco County, it can't be implemented until after July 1st, since that's when this becomes effective. So anyway, I'm just saying I'm very prepared to bring something forward.
Okay. Can we have a motion? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay, next item.
Next item, LDC 240341, Private Road Railroad Crossings Reading Authorization by Railline Owner. This amendment adds requirements for future development seeking private railroad crossings, including agritourism activities, to obtain reading authorization from rail line owners. All new development, including agritourism activities, crossing existing rail lines on private roads, will be required to provide reading authorization to the county by the rail line owner. This authorization from the rail line owner will allow the opportunity to assess the type and amount of traffic that would be crossing the rail line to ensure the appropriate crossing controls are in place for safety purposes. This amendment was directed by the Board of County Commissioners and will add regulations to LDC Section 603, 60403, general access standards, and that concludes this presentation.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Would anyone like to speak to the item?
I know Mr. Lopez is here.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Julio Lopez. I am the father of Jacob Lopez. He was one of six who died that day.
So trust me, this board has been very, I think, outspoken as to our position on Live Local, but this is just one of those scenarios where our hands are tied. And absolutely, this is reactive. I'm the one who brought this because we need to conform. We need to, until the state legislature makes any changes, we've got to live within Live Local. No pun intended. So, thank you.
Commissioner Wostol.
Yeah, I just wanted to clear that up, too. I also went to Tallahassee. I can tell you that many members of our own local state delegation are in favor of changing it to making it more practical, less imposing on communities that wouldn't expect it to be there. And just to reiterate again, there is, because I've been very vocal about my opposition of it at every single meeting, it seems like. And there's no way, if there's some magical stick that I didn't find for us to opt out, it doesn't exist, right?
That's correct.
Now, can we opt out of the property tax?
There is a new, a new law that's become effective July 1st, and that provides for an additional tax exemption for projects that are at the 80% to 120% AMI income level. And it does provide an opt-out process for local governments, certain local governments.
Are we one of those certain local governments?
I believe, based on the information I've seen, I believe that we, we do fit that criteria. We're in the same geographic area as Pasco County, and the standard is whether there is a surplus of, of units in the 0 to 120% AMI, and that's positive for Hillsborough County, the same as it is for Pasco. So yes, there's an opportunity for the board to consider.
And when, and what do you need for me to bring that forward?
We can take direction to bring a report or information on, on how that process would, would, what it would take. It takes adoption of a resolution by the board, basically opting out. So it is, it is a prescribed process.
But that can be done later, after we...
Yes, yes, absolutely. Yes, sorry. I was not clear on that.
Okay. Commissioner Kemp.
It's one of the things I was intending to do. It's, it's one of the things I was intending to do, and kind of researching what the possibilities were with this. I also would like to remind those who talked about the moratorium, because I was, I know that that came up here, too. And we were barred by the state legislature for a couple of years from any moratorium here, although they could have them in other counties, because we were within, like, 100 miles or something like that of the hurricane. And it touched the south of Hillsborough County, so there was a, we, it was, we were told that we couldn't do any moratoriums here. And they finally included what counties could, or what counties were included in that 100 miles. But that took a year or two before Hillsborough County was excluded from that. So that was also, I was trying to think, I knew that we had discussions about that. So we have looked at this. I have really particularly had some discussions about what we could do with regards to this. I was aware of what Pasco County did. It is, even in Pasco County, it can't be implemented until after July 1st, since that's when this becomes effective. So anyway, I'm just saying I'm very prepared to bring something forward.
Okay. Can we have a motion? Motion, Commissioner Kemp. Second, Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, none to zero.
Okay, next item.
Next item, LDC 240341, private railroad crossings reading authorization by rail line owner. This amendment adds requirements for future development seeking private railroad crossings, including agritourism activities, to obtain reading authorization from rail line owners. All new development, including agritourism activities, crossing existing rail lines on private roads, will be required to provide reading authorization to the county by the rail line owner. This authorization from the rail line owner will allow the opportunity to assess the type and amount of traffic that would be crossing the rail line to ensure the appropriate crossing controls are in place for safety purposes. This amendment was directed by the Board of County Commissioners and will add regulations to LDC Section 603, 60403, general access standards. And that concludes this presentation.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item?
I know Mr. Lopez is here.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Julio Lopez. I am the father of Jacob Lopez. He was one of six who died that day in that accident of the railroad crossing at this road. I'm here today to speak on the issue of the area where my son Jacob died that day. The site where my son died, there's no equipment installed. There's no armed crossings. There's no flashing lights indicating that the train is approaching. I had never been through that road until after the passing of my son. And I want to tell you this, it's, it's an awful-looking road. As I was going across it, the hood of my truck just, it's so steep that you can't look over it. There's no telling where you're going as you're crossing the railroad tracks. There is a stop sign with the crossings, but it had graffiti all over it as well. I learned also that, two years before my son's accident, a mother of two also died in that same intersection. She was an experienced driver working for Amazon, and the same thing happened. She was struck by a train, and she, she was killed as well. I have also learned that there are children crossing that railroad every day going to school. These are children. They have to do this every morning to cross this railroad track. My son Jacob had been a straight A student since elementary school. Starting the 11th grade, he was already at a 5.0 GPA. His friend Alyssa Hernandez, which is the middle child of that family that died, the whole family died that day, she had a higher GPA than him. She was also candidate for valedictorian of her class that year. Her older sister had just gotten home as well from graduating from University of North Florida, and she was here to start her career as well. I have a master's degree, and I'm an electrical engineer, electrical engineer, and my GPA was nowhere near what my son's GPA was. Now I won't be able to see his full potential, what my son could have done, or what he The painful, horrible effect that this has put my family through is unimaginable. My entire family have been in survival mode since my son's passing. My wife and my relationship now is just, we just remind each other how sad we are.
Sir, I'm going to give you another minute if you want to continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry?
The time is up, and I'll give you another minute if you'd like to continue.
Okay, thank you. I'm here now to, as a resident of Hillsborough County, now we're asking for your help to help us do something, to provide some sort of equipment for these crossings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir, for coming down. We're very sorry for your loss. Anyone else want to speak to this item? Good evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Miguel Hernandez, and I lost five family members there at the railroad crossing. I've never been, like Julio said, never been there, and there were no safety measures there, no bars, no lights. And, like he said, very steep. You know, we lost six wonderful people, and one got hurt. Was everyone, my brother, he was a great dad, an uncle, friend to a lot of people. And all three kids were doing great in school. The oldest already started her career, and they had a lot of goals, and everything got shattered that day in September 23rd. So, oh, we're asking to, we don't want no other family to go through it, because it's very, very hard. You know, to put some kind of measures, you know, the, the lights, the bars, the, the bell, or, I don't know, caused that railroad. I know they have told me there was another entrance to Wiggins Road. I'm not sure, but if you guys can help us with that, we really appreciate it, because we just don't want nobody else to go through this. This is very, very hard. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Good evening.
Good evening. Sorry. My name is Angelica Cantu, and I am the mother of Guillermo Gama, the sole survivor of the horrible accident that happened at this crossing on September 23rd, 2023. I come to you today to plead for change. I ask that you put yourselves in our shoes. If this had been your family, what would you want? What would you fight for? I'm not going to stand here and act like I know all the rules and proper protocols that should have been at this crossing. What should have been there or what shouldn't? What I do know is that this wasn't the first fatal accident in this crossing. I feel that if some change had been done then, that perhaps this accident could have been avoided. Our lives were forever changed on September 23rd, 2023. Three families were forever affected by this tragedy. I don't wish this pain on anyone. So I ask, please, please consider and make a change, so no other family will have to experience what we are going through every day. I understand that this is very costly for these types of changes, but whose life is not worth the change? The young lady who lost her life, and to her beloved ones who lost theirs? For my sons, whose life will never be the same? Are they not worth it? How many more lives have to be affected or come to an end before something is done about the problem? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Commissioner Owen.
May I have a point of personal preference, too? Commissioner Jason Jones is here. Commissioner Jones, would you mind coming up front? I know you wanted to say a few words, too.
Hello, Commissioners. This is a tough night to be here, but I am here to support these families that you've just heard their difficult stories. This was a big tragedy in Plant City that really impacted and rocked our community. But first, I want to say thank you, Commissioner Owen. Thank you for supporting these families, for being there for these families. You've heard their stories. Commissioner Owen, you've been there since day one, and you've still been supporting them, so thank you very much. Fellow Commissioners, I want to say thank you for listening to the families tonight from Plant City. Again, these were difficult stories to tell, difficult stories for me to even listen to. But again, thank you for working with CSX to hopefully fix this problem, and hopefully you will support this so that we can prevent this from happening again in the future, so that we don't have this happen in Plant City, Hillsborough County, or anywhere. Again, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes. Plant City Commissioner Jason Jones.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I want to thank the families for coming down here. This is a difficult thing to do. You are teaching us a lot about courage, and as I stated last time, Commissioners, when Ms. Lopez spoke, I've had the opportunity to sit with these, with this family and, and listen to their stories. And, gosh, what, what Mr. Lopez said at the very beginning, you know, there was so much potential in these young people that we lost their lives. They, they were, they were capable of so much. And Mr., the Hernandez family, I just, I can't even, this board, we can't put into words, because we don't know how you feel. I pray that nobody else does. But what I said last time, I want to echo it again, that I've sat with too many families since being the county commissioner that have lost a child or a loved one on our roads. And, you know, it's, it's a difficult thing as a commissioner process, but important for this board to really grasp the understanding on the decisions that we make, the impact that it has on, on, on families when it comes to public safety, when it comes to safe roads, infrastructure, and of course, these railroad crossings. And like I told Ms. Lopez as well, a lot of the families I've spoken to have found a memorial through activism, through what you all are here doing today. You're, like I said last time, you're not here necessarily for, for your loved ones that have passed. You want to prevent this from happening again in the future. And I just want to tell you, we will continue to walk with you. We appreciate your courage, and we're not done yet, okay? This, this ordinance is going to deal with future railroad crossings and development. But I can promise you as a board, and I know other board members have sounded off on, on similar issues. I know Commissioner Kemp, I think, has a fam, someone that she cared about, that she lost on a railroad track. We are going to be committed to making these passive intersections safer. There's no reason they shouldn't be. So thank you all for coming down here. Thank, thank you for your courage, and I'll move for adoption of this. Thanks.
Motion adopt by Commissioner Owen, second by Commissioner Kemp and Myers. Commissioner Kemp?
Yes. And thank you for coming down here, and yes, we're, I'm so sorry for your loss. I worked in this commission office for Kathy Castor as an aide, and the other aide, who was my friend before I came here and for long after, Teri Sanchez, some of you may know her. Her only child, her son, when he was seven, Alan Sanchez, was killed in a car in Plant City with a group of children at a crossing, and it was probably 40 years ago. Teri's now gone, but, you know, and I don't know which crossing it was. And I know that we have, I mean, we, we can pass this, but there's, we've been discussing this at the, our TPO, our Transportation Planning Organization, and we tried to be very adamant, this is frustrating, because although it goes through our, our property and we have this road crossing it, it is actually a federal issue and deals with CSX as well that is doing the tracks and with federal and state, state issues. We've been trying, I, I was trying to get a map of all, and I think we may have succeeded in getting the map of all the unguarded crossings. And so we'll continue to do that there, but I do think that there might, I don't, you know, and we have to get federal action, and I don't want to leave them thinking that, I mean, if we had the power tomorrow, if I had the power tomorrow, that every single railroad track that doesn't have a crossing on it would happen. It's going to take, with the federal highway or transportation, because they have to put train safety protocol in place for when the train comes, for bars to go down, for the kinds of provisions to be put in. And yes, it's expensive, but there, every, to me, every single crossing out there should have it. I know we made some local changes there, but there's, I really think we just need to pursue more. But I did want everyone here to understand, too, that it is federal. We've been talking to our state DOT about it. But I do think that, you know, there, there's something that has to be done about this, especially in a populated county like this, especially in these dangerous, terrible situations. And I appreciate you coming down, but we are going to have to work more on it. And I just, I just wanted you all to, to understand where the jurisdiction lies.
Commissioner Cohen.
Thank you very much. I also want to thank the families for coming down, both for this hearing and the one that we had before. Forty-nine years ago, my mom's best friend was killed in a situation just like this on a railroad crossing in northwest Hillsborough County. My mom's in her late 70s now, but there's not a day that goes by that she doesn't think about this and still mourn the loss. And I just want you all to know that, you know, what we're doing tonight, it's too little, too late for a lot of people, but hopefully, God willing, it will save some in the future, and it will be the beginning of us turning the corner and making our roads safer. And Commissioner Owen, thank you very much for bringing this forward.
Commissioner Owen.
And I will say, too, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Adam, you know, CSX has been working with us pretty good on this, correct?
Yes, sir.
So what Commissioner Kemp said is very true. We have a deal with serious preemption issues when you see train tracks. But, but I will say this, that CSX has been working with us pretty well, and we're going to continue to keep our foot on the gas on this issue, and I, I know you all back there will be holding me accountable for it, too. So thank you for being here.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, none to zero.
All right, next item.
Next item, Commissioners, is LDC 240342, wetland setbacks reduction. This text amendment refines the instances where wetland setbacks will provide functional protection to adjacent wetlands, will remove the requirement for a wetland setback when wetlands are approved to be impacted, creating a new wetland line, and the changes to the site will not have water flowing through the otherwise applicable setback area to the wetland, will incorporate allowances for fences that do not impede the flow of water to be located within wetland setback areas, permit pool screen enclosures to be located in portions of wetland setback areas where pools are currently allowed. Section 40107 of the Land Development Code will be updated with these changes. And this concludes this presentation.
Thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Can we have a motion? Motion, Commissioner Kemp, Second Commissioner Cohen. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries, none to zero.
All right, next item.
Next item, LDC 240343, irrigation plans revisions. This text amendment aims to reduce duplicative irrigation designs by eliminating the need for developers to submit an irrigation plan for review during the site and subdivision application process, will eliminate the requirement for applicants to submit an irrigation plan, increasing review efficiency and reducing duplicate efforts when designing the irrigation system. The amendment will require that irrigation design meets Land Development Code design criteria attested to by a Florida state licensed professional. And this concludes this presentation.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Dave Coleman, again. Lakeland has a pollution problem with their shallow aquifer to such an extreme that they already use inexpensive reverse osmosis on their reclaimed water. Toilet-to-tap has become a reality there. Twice last year, Tampa bought water from Tampa Bay Water Authority. I recently got to speak with Mayor Jane. If we would be following Lakeland, her response was no. We have to do two things: conserve water and build better relationship with Tampa Bay Water. This is great news. Conservation can bring us into the future. We're already doing all of those water restrictions with our irrigation systems. Hillsborough County wants to remove the requirement of contractors to provide a blueprint of the irrigation design in a time when we want the best-designed systems to conserve water. As an irrigation contractor with a design-build company for 17 years, it was my responsibility to provide design blueprints with my systems. It was no great expense or time consumer. It was my responsibility to design the best systems I could. We need to be, we need the best systems, not, not only the requirement that they vouch that they themselves are complying with code. Commissioner Wostol said this is great news. It will save money for developers. Well, as a contractor, it was prudent and the right thing to provide a plan, which with notes during construction became an as-built, which could be left with the project, helping ease future service work and redesign. The crap design of most systems in Hillsborough will only get worse. I moved here 24 years ago, and I was appalled at water across walkways into roadways, spraying rotary on the same zone, sun and shade areas on the same zone, no fleet room, flow meter alert devices that are now readily available on systems, and rain sensors not working. Issues all too common, and all top many of these still today. Anyway, say no to Wostol, say yes to conserving water. Hillsborough deserves better. Again, Hillsborough, in general, has the most pitiful irrigation systems I've ever seen. Do more, not less. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to the item? Commissioner Wostol.
Mr. Gormly, they still have to fully submit an irrigation plan. This just removes them from having to first submit a hardcoded plan that everyone knows full well will have to be paid for, to be redone after setbacks or changes in the designs come, and then they have to resubmit another plan, which then increases the cost of the project. Is that correct, that they still have to submit a full irrigation plan at the end of it?
They will, they will have to, at the end of this, certify that the plan was designed, the irrigation system was designed in accordance with applicable regulations that ensure that there is not overspray or double coverage of areas. The intent with that is to ensure... there is not overspray or double coverage of areas. The intent with that is to ensure irrigation goes where it's needed and not excess irrigation where it's not needed. That's, this will accomplish that and, and eliminate the step that you described of having a plan be developed that may, that may not be ultimately the plan that they built from.
Perfect. Yeah, this is just another opportunity to remove unnecessary costs on the development of home inventories, which is a real project to increase the affordabilities of homes, not fake projects that take subsidies from people's property taxes. So this is a great plan, and I really appreciate staff working with me on this, and I move for approval.
A motion to approve. Commissioner Wostel, Second Commissioner Owen, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item.
Next item, LDC 240662, fire rescue facilities and law enforcement facilities design exemption. This amendment will exempt county fire rescue facilities and law enforcement facilities from the building architectural design requirements when located in special districts. These facilities will be exempt from the architectural standard found in the Land Development Code Article III. Special districts will also allow the administrator to approve changes to development requirements to the minimum extent necessary to accommodate the requirements needed to develop these facilities. This exception from the design requirements and standards will simplify and streamline the site and building permitting process for these facilities intended to provide public safety and protective services to the county. And this concludes my presentation.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to the item?
Move approval.
A motion to approve. Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Next item.
The last item for the second public hearing is LDC 240663, county's infrastructure projects alternative site development review process. The amendment will allow concurrent review of site design along with project construction and establish the review procedure for said concurrent review and construction process for counties' capital projects. Projects will still be subject to existing design and construction standards established by the county's Land Development Code while recognizing the flexibility needed for their design-build process. LDC Section 100106, site development plan review procedures will be modified, adding a new subsection for exemption for county project review procedures. And this concludes this presentation.
It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Motion.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Cohen. No comments. Please record your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, this time, if we can have a motion to approve an ordinance to include the LDC amendments A1 through A9 that we just.
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, Second Commissioner Myers, please record your vote on the ordinance.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, now the board will hold the initial public hearing on LDC Amendment, LDC 24-0221. No vote will be taken by the board at this time. The board will hold a second public hearing on August 8, 2024, to consider the adoption of the amendment. Ms. Roe.
Commissioners, this is LDC 240221, water utilities rural service area. This is related to Comprehensive Plan Amendment 2318. The purpose of this publicly initiated amendment is to implement the rural areas utilities policies proposed to be updated on the One Water Chapter of the Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan under CPA 2318. The usage of this regulation, if adopted, only applies to those properties outside the urban service boundary, with the exception that these new policies will not apply to the Keystone Odessa Community Plan area. Proposed changes to LDC Section 40202 will add criteria for connections to an existing water utility line or an existing wastewater line in the rural service area, consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Will also add criteria to allow the extension of utility lines into the rural service area to address existing adverse environmental conditions attributable to septic or private franchise or interim infrastructure facilities and to prevent septic tank clustering in environmentally sensitive areas, areas prone to flooding under limited, under limited circumstances consistent with the comprehensive plan policies. Exception to the extension and connection criteria will be considered in a limited case of overriding public interest and subject to review and approval by the Board of County Commissioners. And this will all be consistent with the Land Development Code, Section Part 100600. It will also clarify the definition for the Land Development Code for existing line connections. And this concludes this presentation.
Right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Please come forward.
Melissa Nordbeck, I'm here again to ask you to vote no on the Rural Utility Comp Plan Amendment. You've been given no evidence of issues with septic tanks, just the possibility that in the future, there could be an issue. Yet, on the opposing side of the argument, you have heard evidence of this amendment allowing developers to build the maximum amount of homes allowed on a property, because they will not have the setbacks required if a development is on well and septic. Residents will be required to hook up to a central utility at their own expense instead of being allowed to repair, replace, or install a new septic. And in the spirit of a best defense is a good offense, getting in front of an issue instead of passively sitting on the sidelines, voting down this amendment will protect the county's rural areas from live local act projects that will result in millions of dollars in lost tax revenue for the county while stressing infrastructure and public services that are already spread thin in the rural area. The current One Water policy addresses any documented hazardous conditions that might present themselves. It already allows extensions for utilities for schools or libraries, another talking point that keeps being raised, and it allows a single home or business in the rural area to connect if there's already an adjacent line, if they want to. Replacing the word "existing" with "may subdivide" is the true reason for this comp plan amendment. The current policy strictly forbids developers from extending utilities outside of the urban service area, and this new comp plan amendment gives them that permission.
Thank you. Anyone else want to speak to this item?
Thank you. Good evening. Jake Kramer with Sterns Weaver Miller, 401 East Jackson Street, here representing Hillsborough County Foreign Bureau. We support this amendment. It simply matches up with what you all moved forward recently with the comprehensive plan language. We believe this is sort of the unusual case, where it protects property rights, the community, and the environment. And that Venn diagram, you don't get that very often. So we would just ask you to please move this forward. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I don't see anyone else. So that concludes the LDC Amendment public hearing, and we'll adjourn that and open the Comprehensive Plan Amendment public hearing. The Board of County Commissioners will consider the adoption of text amendments to the comprehensive plan. The board will also consider the adoption amendments to the future land use map of the comprehensive plan, as well as concurrent application for rezonings of properties that are the subject of these map amendments. Now, I ask the Planning Commission staff to begin the first item on tonight's agenda.
Good evening. Melissa Zornita, Planning Commission. The first items are up for adoption. Our text amendments related to the update of the future land use section of the comprehensive plan. They were reviewed by the state and did not have any objections, so they are back for your adoption. Melissa Leinhart has the first item.
Good evening.
Good evening. Melissa Leinhart, for the record, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present Goal One of the Future Land Use Section update of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, as Ms. Zornita noted. And then we did see you in March 7 of this year with eight new goals for the update. At that time, six out of the eight goals were transmitted to the state, and two that we're still working on. Goals four and six are not part of the package this evening, and they are scheduled to come before you on August 8, as Melissa mentioned. I also wanted to mention that we have done some work, as the board has directed on those, and we've started our outreach. We had a community meeting this week for the Goals four and six for the updates to inform the public, and then we have another one scheduled for next week. So you'll hear more about that on August 8. The comprehensive plan for unincorporated Hillsborough County has not been substantially updated since 2008. I think you've heard that many times, but I'll just state it for the record. And the state does require that comprehensive plans have a 20-year horizon, with the horizon date of 2025 that we have currently. The current future land use section is not in compliance with that requirement. So tonight, we're here with a reorganized, streamlined future land use section, or at least six out of the eight goals, that incorporates some changes and overall address growth that we anticipate over the next 20 years. So as this slide shows, many of you have seen the various sections that have come through for approvals over the past couple of years. We've had the One Water Chapter be adopted, and it's effective. We've seen recan open space, coastal management, environmental instability, mobility, housing, intergovernmental coordination, capital improvements, and solid waste. So this is the last piece of that puzzle. This slide shows our outreach. I showed this at our last meeting, but I just wanted to reiterate that we've had a lot of outreach on the future land use updates specifically. We've had four virtual community meetings, three in-person community meetings. We also had that specific group, the project advisory team, for those people who wanted to drill down a little bit. We had four of those meetings. We had an online survey with over 1,800 responses, and the update was also featured in multiple media outlets. And of course, a more in-depth view of all the outreach is in your packets in each of the staff reports. So that brings us to the background of Goal One. This is a publicly initiated plan amendment. It's also the first of the six goals that you'll see tonight, which along with Goals four and six, make up the entire future land use section. So Goal One itself, the language, is to maintain a land use pattern that concentrates growth in the urban service area and is supported by existing or planned public facilities and services. The new proposed policy language contains similar adopted language that we have today, but it elaborates on the appropriateness of future land use map amendments that increase density or intensity within the urban service area to a degree that it changes the future land use category from a suburban category to an urban category. There's also policy direction that focuses on the importance of providing adequate infrastructure for development. There's some additional new language that outlines the importance of coordinating with adjacent jurisdictions to manage the timing and location of new development and redevelopment when occurs along jurisdictional boundaries. There's also a modification to the criteria that must be met for publicly and privately initiated plan amendments to the urban service area boundary. And then lastly, and the biggest change under Goal One, is the introduction of expansion areas to accommodate future growth and future population and job growth. These are areas that are currently in the rural area, but will transition to suburban or an urban development pattern over the planning horizon of the comprehensive plan, which looks out to 2045. As we've said in our outreach, and at the many meetings that we've had with you all about this update, if we do not plan for it, it will happen in an unplanned way. And that brings me to the consistency review for this item. Goal One was found consistent with several policies in the future land use element today. In addition to the major changes listed on the previous slides, the section updates and retains important components of the existing or adopted language, and it's consistent with those components. This includes proactively directing growth into the urban service area, as well as guiding growth to the areas that can accommodate that growth with public infrastructure and services. And based on that information, Planning Commission staff recommends the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 23-21, be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation, and I am here for any questions.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item?
Dave Coleman again. That was a great report, and I finally saw it. I couldn't find it, the words, something along the lines of maintain the commitment to the urban core, but it was in there in that presentation just now. And that's what I'm asking this board to do, to walk and chew gum at the same time. Too many times, I've heard in this room that there's going to be nothing given to the urban core until we fix East and South County. I understand the urgency of getting things right out into Y-Mama, but when I hear words at flu meetings like Bradenton is, Brandon is already destroyed, let's just forget about it and move on to other things, that's intolerable. Mobility was one of the words that was used there, and obviously, we had some, it's really tragic and heartfelt concern this evening. But I also need to draw your attention yet once again to 233 dead this year, 7,000 hit and runs, and thousands of trauma cases in our local emergency rooms. And this is all due to the FDOT, to Hillsborough County Sheriff's Department Office, and partly, a number of them are CSX. But also, I can say that the TPO, since beginning to go there five years ago, the numbers haven't changed. This board has not lifted a finger to change anything. You have not been there since day one. For 233 dead people last year, hundreds dead every single year, this is completely unacceptable. You need to not just sit here and pat yourselves on the back and complain when somebody comes in here with an issue. You need to be proactive and really start getting some things on the ball. Listen to things coming out of Vision Zero. The 2050 plan was, was accepted last night, and will be forwarded to the TPO by the tip. You got to dig a little bit deeper. You got to look into yourselves, and you got to start creating changes. On my street alone, a half a mile north and a half a mile south, over the past several years, there were 10 of those white, or I know of people that died, but there's seven of those white little signs with names on them. This has to stop. Thank you.
Commissioner Wostel.
Ms. Leinhart, we've pointed out in the past that the 80%, 20% rule of, of trying to maximize, that that's a goal. It's not a hard and fast rule, but it's a goal. And it makes complete sense to maximize the infrastructure that we've built in a consolidated area. But we've also said that we've, we're really coming to an end of available land and the opportunities. So I guess I'm confused why we still have the minimum density requirement in there, which I'm not a fan of anyways, but since we're coming to an end of that 80%, and we've complained a lot about the amount of density and traffic that we have out in those areas, and we've talked about wanting to taper the density as it goes out into the rural area more, why would we continue to promote the minimum density rule if somebody did want to come in and say, hey, I only want one home per acre? I think that that's something that we shouldn't make more difficult for people at this point, but welcome. So why is it still in there?
That's a great question. We left that language in, and we do utilize that a lot, as you know, in our rezoning evaluations. The minimum density rule, it does maximize the infrastructure as much as possible without forcing the hand of making someone do the maximum density for the future land use category. So in Res Four, you would have to have three dwelling units per acre. But I would also point out that there are several exceptions to minimum density, and a lot of the applications that don't meet minimum density, because most developers want more, right? So they're not really seeking to do less. The exceptions include things like environmental constraints. So if your site has an extensive amount of wetlands, then we would take that into consideration. If your site is in a coastal high hazard area, we would take that under advisement. There's also an exception that we've left in that's pretty broad stroke, I would say, and that's about compatibility. So if someone comes in and they say, okay, I'm in this kind of remnant area of Brandon, and we see a lot of 7,000 square foot lots or 10,000 square foot lots, they were developed ages ago, and they're more like, they have more of kind of a rural residential feel than something more urban, then they could come in and say, we want to see, you know, instead of us putting 4,000 square foot lots in there, maybe we would do something that kind of bridges that gap. So there is a flexibility with that policy with the exceptions, while we're still trying to maximize what's in the urban service area. And we, and I do have the slides somewhere, but there's, there's 82 slides in this presentation. They're all at the end, and I can find it if you'd like. But the, the map that we had shown previously about what's available for development and redevelopment is very small. So I would argue that it's actually more important now to make sure we maximize what's left, and then to make sure in the urban expansion areas, when we look at those, that we have enough rooftops that would actually support the public infrastructure that's being extended to cover those areas. Does that make sense?
Hmm.
I don't know if Melissa, if you have anything to add?
Well, the, the other thing that I would just add is that because we are in the urban service area, so limited on the remaining land, a lot of the projects you're going to start to see are going to be redevelopment projects. And as they are redeveloping in the urban service area, again, we're going to want to try to encourage them to try to encourage them to maximize the infrastructure that's already there. So areas like the university area, or we've got some plan amendments tonight, one in Palm River, for example, we'd like to see that infrastructure that's there be utilized. And I think that's going to be more than the norm, that you're seeing things in those areas start to redevelop from what they've been for decades.
Well, the folks in Palm River have been there for so long, were suggesting that we're going to decide that they don't want it to stay the single-family lots that it largely encompasses right now then. So I don't, I don't know that I even still agree and find it attractive for redevelopment purposes. Does this have to be, this minimum density policy have to remain in there for it to move forward?
It does not. I would say that the minimum density policy is actually in the newly organized plan under Goal Two. So it's probably showing up as something that we found that Goal One was consistent with, but in the new plan, it is Policy 2.3.1, so it would come up under the next item. But certainly, it's within the board's purview if you would like to, one thing to modify that policy or eliminate the policy. You know, staff did, in the process of discussing this, contemplate whether or not that should just apply to some of the higher-density land use categories. Right now, it applies to four units per acre or greater. So one option would be perhaps to, if you did not want it to apply in the suburban land use categories, to have it apply to the nine-minute-per-acre or higher categories.
So you said that that's coming up in the next item, and that's where we need to be?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll yield. Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Owen.
Then I'll wait. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Then I'll wait as well, because I would second that motion if you decide to make it. To me, and I've been outspoken on this, I think we had this come before the board one time so far, right? Where we had the, and I forget exactly what the issue was, but we, as a board, voted, if I'm not mistaken, to go ahead and allow them to do that, the density they were requesting, if I remember correctly. But I just don't, I don't think that's a good policy either, and again, I've been outspoken about it. It seems something very un-American about telling people, you need to do more with your property. We're telling you to do more. And I would actually welcome less density anywhere in Hillsborough County, to be frank with you right now. So, so I, you know, if that comes, if you decide to make that motion, or, you know, I will gladly support it, but I'll just park that until we get to the second one and move for approval of A1.
And we got a motion to approve Commissioner Owen, second. Second Commissioner Winstall, Commissioner Kemp.
Yeah, I guess it's in the next place, but we've had quite an extensive discussion here about minimum density. And I'll just say again, I do support the minimum density. As staff has pointed out, it rarely comes into play, because developers usually want to make the most of their properties. So it's not even something that is really a burden. And then again, if the property is configured in a way that doesn't make the minimum density possible, then, you know, they can't, that can be considered with the minimum density. The other thing that can be considered with regards to the minimum density at any time, this board can just waive that if they want to, right? I mean, they can re-say it, but, you know, and you can all argue that, oh, well, this doesn't meet minimum density, and this board can just go, so what? So it's just like, it's a guidance that I think makes sense, especially when all of us are paying for the infrastructure, continuing infrastructure, and to use infrastructure to the greatest extent that makes sense. And just as a general guideline in a rural saw, just add that. I know it's not part of what we're discussing now, but in response to the discussion that's occurred.
Commissioner Cohen.
And I just figured I'd chime in as long as we're on the topic. I agree with Commissioner Kemp. It's been my experience over the years that it is rare, but when it comes up, as long as there's a reasonable reason, the board has always, in my experience, been willing to waive it. And I do think it's important to have it just as a means of maximizing all of this money that we've spent on infrastructure and that we're going to continue to be spending on some of these big projects. I think we want to maximize what the ratepayers get, and the way to do that is to encourage people to utilize it.
Okay. Please record your vote.
Motion carries, 0 to 1.
Next item.
Thank you.
Sorry. Goal Two will be presented by Katrina Corcoran.
Katrina Corcoran, Planning Commission staff. I'm here tonight to present on unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, Flu Section Update, Goal Two. This is also on growth management. Goal Two reads, "Ensure that the character compatibility and location of land uses optimize the combined potential for economic benefit, fiscal sustainability, protection of natural resources, and maintaining viable agriculture. Ensure density and intensities are maintained through the future land use map." The major proposed changes with this amendment include the inclusion of a future land use categories table. No major changes to the categories themselves, but this brings the summary near the start of the section and allows for easier viewing of the category, intent, typical uses, et cetera. We also have a new bonus structure called Centers and Connections, or CNC. The intent is to streamline the comprehensive plan amendment process by allowing density and intensity bonuses within certain areas of unincorporated Hillsborough County, directing growth to areas where it's desired and maintainable within the urban service area. We have language on the update to Transfer of Development Rights, or TDR, language. This is for the pilot program and receiving areas, making them implementable, and guiding companion land development code amendments. The receiving areas include Y-Mama and CNC locations. Finally, we have new language to develop congregate living facilities, or CLFs. This is based on board direction and more clearly defines where CLFs can be considered within certain future land use categories and how their density and intensity will be I previously mentioned the Centers and Connections. This is the map. You can see the connections here with those navy blue lines, the eighth-of-a-mile buffer in the pink, and the centers, quarter-mile centers there as well. This map has not changed since transmission. The Planning Commission found this proposed text amendment consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and the section updates and retains important components of the existing language and is consistent with those components. This was transmitted back in March, and there were no comments from state review. Happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? I wish to pledge to the board. Motion approved. Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Kemp. Commissioner Owen.
Well, if this is the area to move to strike the policy of the minimum density requirement, I will make that motion. So, motion to strike the minimum density requirement and outline it in A2.
So that's, I guess that's a substitute motion by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Winstall. Any comments? Commissioner Winstall.
Yeah, I would just say that I do agree that, I think, the 80% policy made sense when the urban service area was put into place in, what, like '89 or something? I was five years old. At this point, we've had several conversations that we've really come to the end of that benefit, which is why now, I do understand that there's some waivers, but I would rather just make it openly available to them so that they don't feel like they have to jump through a hoop or question whether or not, or try and meet with seven commissioners, just say, hey, it's available, and I only want to do one home per acre. So I will be supporting it for that reason.
Melissa, do you want to add something?
I just wanted to clarify for the record that the motion would be to strike Policy 2.3.1 about minimum density and then renumber the policies that follow. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we got a substitute motion, Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Winstall. Please record your vote.
Motion carries, 4 to 3. Commissioners Cohen, Kemp, and Myers voted no.
All right. Next item.
Just a point. The requirement of the Comprehensive Plan is that the amendment must be passed with the vote of five commissioners. So that did fail as far as adoption.
Okay.
So I'll move approval of that the amendment is drafted.
So you'll move to reconsider? Let's move to reconsider.
Second.
The last item. Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, vote on the reconsideration.
Motion carries, 5 to 2. Commissioners Cameron Sepeda and Winstall voted no.
Okay, so now your motion is?
The motion is to pass it as drafted.
That's drafted, okay. Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Commissioners Cameron Sepeda, Hagan, and Winstall voted no.
Okay. Next item.
So, point of order, so that means that that whole, number two fails completely, correct? So that would be everything encompassing, A2 fails.
Yeah.
May, as the applicant, can we request to continue? I'm not sure what procedurally.
Well, let them comment first.
I don't know.
I think, I think perhaps the challenge is that A2 in and of itself interplays with the other amendments, and not approving A2 may leave some, some gaps in the, if I may, in the current plan.
Yes, I think we would then have to revert back to all of the currently adopted language in the plan, which would retain the minimum density policy, because that was not a proposed change. Perhaps an alternative that might garner five votes, I don't know, would be to modify Policy 2.3.1 to just apply in the urban land use categories, so nine units per acre and higher.
Commissioner Owen.
Yeah, and that's why I voted the way I did, to support mine, and then the second time, I voted to support this motion, because I felt like that's the only logical solution to get all these through. So that puts us in a situation here where if we're not approving this as is, it affects everything, correct? So, and I think you suggested continuing it, but we can't, I don't think we can do that either, just to go for the rest of the amendments.
Well, it could be continued if there was desire to try to work on some different language, although I, you know, it may.
So we could continue just as, because we're doing that with Four and Six in essence. So I'll move, I'll make a motion to continue to and include it, if that time date's possible, for any possible changes when we're addressing Four and Six.
No issues with that?
All right, I'll second that.
Okay. Motion to continue by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. Commissioner Myers, you want to comment on this? You good? Commissioner Kemp?
Yes, I do. I'm thinking a motion to reconsider and not pass the first part of it and just leave as it is myself. To reconsider the first part and, you know, vote on that, because knowing this, I would reconsider my support for that and vote no on that, and just stick with our policies since the two are intertwined.
Commissioner Myers.
Yes. Could we handle this separately? Vote on the initial, what was there, and then let the second one be added, what we wanted to delete out of the equation? Because what is before us is a separate motion.
Commissioner Owen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I think the motion to continue is the cleanest way to do it, unless you're making a substitute motion on my motion, I can't obviously stop that, but, but I won't be supporting Commissioner Kemp's motion, but I would support a motion to continue, so we can clean it up and even get a better understanding here of what we're doing. So I think that I won't be supporting it if that's an amended motion to my motion to continue.
Adam, any challenges or issues with continuing this?
I think that, given, given the discussion here, that may be a prudent way to help resolve this issue, and it will come back with the other two goals. It will all work together.
Okay. Well, I'm going to support that. Commissioner Kemp, did you do anything?
No, I just think the reconsideration, the first one, and then just bring them both back if you want. And, and, you know, not, yeah, just so that we revert to the original policy rather than, since they're both tied.
Okay, so we got a motion or a second to continue?
I'll do a substitute to reconsider the first part.
Okay, we have a substitute motion by Commissioner Kemp. Do we have a second? All right, motion fails for lack of a second to the original motion to continue by Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carries, 6 to 1. Commissioner Kemp voted no.
All right, next item. Don't be shy.
Sorry. The next item is Goal Three, which will be presented by Erica.
This is Erica Larson, Planning Commission staff. This is Goal Three for the Future Land Use Unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. This goal comprises five new objectives. The proposed changes include the following: the combination of the compatibility and community planning sections, updated and consolidated language pertaining to the economically disadvantaged populations, which was housed, and economically disadvantaged groups element, or edge for short, and revisions to the cultural and historical preservation sections to reflect current programs and needs. Planning Commission found the proposed text amendment, HCCPA 2323, consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Thank you. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
All right, this is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? I wish to pledge to the board.
Second.
Motion approved. Commissioner Owen, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carries, 0 to 1.
Next item.
The next item is Goal Five, which will be presented by Karla Lianos.
Karla Lianos with Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 24-25. It's the agricultural section of the future land use section update. Now, there were just three main changes to this section. It was basically, we wanted to add Goal Five, which was to kind of wrap all of the policies into one common goal. And then the other two changes were grammatical revisions and the renumbering of all the policies. We did transmit this to state. State did not have any comments on this. So therefore, Planning Commission staff is recommending that the proposed text amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives of the unincorporated county comprehensive plan.
Public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Commissioner Winstall.
I just really appreciate you guys engaging the Ad community so much. I know that they've reached out to me and thanked me for it as well, so thank you. Good job.
Can we have a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, second Commissioner Cohen. Please record your vote.
Motion carries, 0 to 1.
Next item.
Next item is Goal Seven, which will be presented by Gillian Massey.
Good evening, Gillian Massey, Planning Commission staff. I'll be presenting on Goal Seven, called Balance with Natural Resources. And this is, sorry, HCCPA 24-27. The proposed text amendments under Goal Seven do not include the deletion of existing policies or move them to other sections of the Comprehensive Plan. The proposed text amendments are minor in nature, providing clarifying and descriptive language within the existing policies. First, it adds the language for Goal Seven. First, it adds the language for Goal Seven, that says, "To seek a balance between the preservation of natural systems and the built environment while simultaneously being prepared for adverse natural events, provide an environment where people naturally interact with each other and their community, including streets, parks, and other public facilities." Other policies which were added include, under Objective 7.1, descriptive language relating to encouraging growth that is sustainable and resilient while protecting environmentally sensitive resources. Also, under Objective 7.2, language that says, "To support the creation of development standards to provide buffers around ELAT property." Finally, a change that was made under Policy 7.4.5 regarding the transmittal of land use plan amendment applications to the Port of Tampa Bay. Currently, the language states that the Planning Commission will transmit a copy of all land use plan amendments, applications to the Port of Tampa Bay that are within the Port Activity Center or within 250 feet of that area or any amendment proposing changes to an existing industrial future land use designated parcel. These text changes were reviewed for consistency with the comprehensive plan, and Planning Commission found them to be consistent with several goals, objectives, and policies. All agency comments were reviewed and addressed, and there were no objections received from the state. And with that, Planning Commission recommends that the proposed text amendment HCCPA 23-27 be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and I'm here for any questions if you have any. Thank you.
All right, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Can we have a motion?
Move. Second.
Motion, Commissioner Owen, Second Commissioner Myers, please accord your vote.
Motion carries, none to zero.
Next item.
The final text amendment is Goal Eight, which will be presented by Melissa Leinhart.
Good evening again, Melissa Leinhart for the record, Planning Commission staff. This is Goal Eight of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Future Land Use Section Update. This is the economic development section, and in this section, we're making some changes. We're proposing to modify some introductory language, and that's based on county staff input. We've also clarified target industries and what those are as defined by state statute. We're also encouraging the county to promote employment and balance with the population growth that we're also about to experience. We've removed references to economic development areas and provided a broader reference to site or areas that allow flexibility during site design. We've also added new language that supports incentive efforts and flexibility in prioritizing public infrastructure when locating target industries in areas as identified as redevelopment pilot project areas, and this was all done in conjunction with Hillsborough County's Economic Development Department. You've heard some about the EDGE element previously, that's the economically disadvantaged groups element. It's an optional, oh, I can't even speak, an optional element per state statute, so it's not obligatory for the comprehensive plan. We have had one, we have one right now, adopted in the plan. Several of the policies over the last few years with the updates of the other sections, they have been moved to sections like mobility, recreation, and open space, intergovernmental coordination, and the future land use update intends to bring over the remaining EDGE policies that address housing, employment, economic development, public health, and land use. Some of those policies were rewritten to update terminology for the 20-year plan horizon and also to strengthen the compatibility section of the future land use element. The policies that were not moved from the EDGE element into the future land use section or other sections of the comprehensive plan are proposed for deletion and mostly due to being duplicative of other EDGE policies that were moved or just other comprehensive plan policies in general and the other elements. All policies proposed for deletion within the future land use element can be found in your packet at the end of the report. And based on that, our recommendation is that we found this proposed text amendment HCCPA 23-28 consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. That concludes my presentation, and I'm here for questions.
This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Can we have a motion?
Second.
Motion, Commissioner Myers, Second Commissioner Cohen, please accord your vote.
Motion carries, none to zero.
All right, now we have two small use or small scale future land use map amendments and related rezonings. Planning Commission want to introduce the first item?
Yes, the first of those is CPA 2405, which will be presented by Tyreek Royal.
Good evening, Commissioners, Carla Yanoz for the record with Planning Commission staff. This is HCCPA 24-05. The property is located at 13609 North Florida Avenue. This is a privately initiated small-scale comprehensive plan amendment on 2.83 acres in size. The request is going from residential 12 and office commercial 20 to office commercial 20. The general location of the subject site, as you see on this screen, is the northernmost plan amendment of, on the map, and it's within the urban service area and within the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. Now, here we have an aerial of the subject site, which is outlined in yellow. The subject site is located west of Interstate 275, north of Fletcher Avenue, east of North Florida Avenue, and south of 138th Street. There are single-family detached residential units located to the east between the subject site and Interstate 275 and along 138th Street. Now, along both North Florida Avenue and Fletcher Avenue are numerous commercial and office uses, and finally behind, you see some commercial uses on the west side of North Florida Avenue. We have also Tyrone Village Mobile Home Park, as you can see. Now, for some photos of the subject site and the surrounding area, here we're looking at the subject site from North Florida Avenue. Next, we are standing at the front of the subject site along North Florida Avenue looking south. And here in the photograph, the property is located behind, you know, the photograph on the other side of the road across North Florida Avenue. And the subject site here is located right behind the wall on the right. And in this photo, we are standing at the end of East 137th Avenue facing the subject site. Curiosity Creek runs between the dead end of 137th Avenue and the subject property. Now, we turn around and look eastward down 137th Avenue. It's those single-family detached residential units that you can see on the original aerial map. Now, the adopted future land use, again, is office commercial 20 and residential 12. You see the pattern running north and southbound along North Florida Avenue, and then as you transition east towards Interstate 275, you'll start to see the residential 12 future land use category. And then to, over to the west side of Florida Avenue, just past the office commercial 20, you have that residential four future land use category. Now, the property is requesting, or the applicant is requesting to go to office commercial 20, so, you know, we were looking at compatibility, so we'll get into that. And under the existing future land use, you will see that they can achieve up to 45 dwelling units or 77,000 square feet of non-residential use. Under the proposed potential, they can reach up to 56 dwelling units and potentially 92,000 square feet of non-residential use. Overall, that, the proposed amendment will add additional, you know, density and square footage. It also will, you know, add different uses such as commercial intensive uses if approved. Now, we looked at compatibility in terms of the surrounding neighborhood protection policies, if it's a compatible infill property. We also looked at the community plan policies. We found it consistent and comparable and compatible to the area. We also looked at the transit supportive development policies as well, and we found those consistent. And overall, Planning Commission, when we took it to the board, they also voted for a consistency finding, so Planning Commission is recommending the proposed plan amendment be found consistent with the goals and objectives and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and I will stand if you have any questions.
Is the applicant here?
Good evening.
Good evening, Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson, 101 East Kennedy Boulevard, Suite 2700, Tampa, Florida. I think Carla did a good job presenting the comprehensive plan amendment, and I don't have any further presentation unless you have questions, and I'll save my presentation to the zoning companion.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? Good evening.
Dave Coleman again. I had no idea that that was going to be on the agenda. I live right across the street from the place, and I saw it coming up on the, on the agenda today, and I just wanted to ask if anybody could be clear about what is going to be there. There were several different options just presented, but I've never noticed any kind of, you know, those signs that you put out there that say that some change is coming. It's right across the street from my house. I drive up my driveway every day and back in, and I never noticed a sign. That's one thing I was concerned about. And the other thing I was concerned about is that in, you know, in the agenda item, which you do all the time with every agenda item, you barely give any information whatsoever. So I don't even know what to ask when I'm coming here. I'd like a fuller explanation in your agenda items from the B O C C in these planning commission meetings about what each item is, and if somebody could, it might be the best thing in the whole world, you know what I mean? I might be their customer, I don't know, but that's my question. I haven't got a clue what it is.
Anyone else like to speak to the item? Would the applicant like to, since you have a rebuttal, answer the gentleman's question?
Kami Corbett again. I'm not sure where the gentleman lives. I mean, to be right across the street from that, this would be on Florida Avenue, the site fronts on Florida Avenue, so I don't know if he's behind. Perhaps we'll address that during the rezoning. We have a more detailed site plan. We are planning for affordable housing, multifamily housing, and you'll hear that in the zoning presentation.
All right, thank you. All right, the vote on this will take place after the rezoning. This time, anyone that plans on speaking during the rezoning, please stand, raise your right hand so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or not the test, whether you are about to give the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
All right, Mr. Gray, do you need to introduce this item?
Yes. The rezoning portion of this agenda is a rezoning application 24-0295. The request is to zone a 2.83 acre parcel in the greater north of the area on the north, east side of, east side of North Florida Avenue, north of Fletcher Avenue. The request is rezoned from commercial zoning and RSC 6 to a planned development. The planned development would allow for 99 units. It's a part of this request, they are asking for affordable housing density bonus to get up to the 99 units, based on if the RES 20 comprehensive plan amendment is approved. The site plan does provide for sensitivity to the commercial, to the east, to the residential that's to the east, providing, building the locating in the northwest corner, close, in close proximity to North Florida Avenue, over 160 feet from the eastern property boundary, based on surrounding development pattern, which consists of primary commercial uses to the north and south of the property, and the enhanced setback is noted in the site plan, our staff is recommending approval. The Planning Commission found it consistent, and the hearing author is also recommending approval. We're available for any questions.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, Kami Corbett with the law firm of Hillward and Henderson again, representing the applicant, Blue Sky Communities. I think many of you know Blue Sky and their work here in the Hillsborough County and the affordable housing communities that they produce. The development location, again, is in the urban core of the county. It's really more in this, as much in the city as it is in the county. It is located along Florida Avenue just north of Bears. And again, you just saw the future land use category. Interestingly about this site, the depth of the RC 12, or the RS 12 is 500 feet, so we could have flexed the OC 20 boundary here, but we did not do that because we wanted to seek the affordable housing density bonus. Now, several of you did approve a, an amendment that allowed for the use of the flex on top of the affordable housing density bonus on top of the flex. We didn't do that here. We took Commissioner Kemp's words to heart that she thought that the right way to do this was to amend the comprehensive plan and then seek the bonus density on top of that, and so that's what we're doing this evening. As indicated, we are asking for a maximum of 99 units, and we've got 10 units set aside for 60% or less of AMI and 10 households set aside for 80% or less. We have a maximum height of five stories and 60 feet. We are asking for not having the two-to-one setback applied to the north, but those are commercial businesses, and we are asking for, again, a PD variation for screening along that northern side, but to existing commercial, commercial businesses. This is a site plan. You can see that we have an existing stormwater pond to the east to buffer between the multifamily uses and the single-family uses. We have had several public hearings on this. We had the comprehensive plan amendment, and we also had the zoning hearing, master hearing, and we did hear from a couple of the neighbors to the north regarding the commercial, and they just wanted to make sure we had a fence, and we have promised, we have promised that. So the notices did go out, and we had heard from neighbors. It's a great location. It's walking distance to Tampa Family Health Centers along Bears Avenue, a walking distance Wind Dixie's right across the street, and we are all along a bus line, which is exactly where you want your affordable housing to be located. This is the, actually, this is a map of the access to transit, which gets us downtown university area out to West Chase. It's one of the best transit areas in the county. And ultimately, we have recommendations of approval from all reviewing agencies, including the zoning hearing master and the Planning Commission and Development Services, and we would respectfully request your approval this evening.
All right, thank you. Any proponent testimony? I don't think there's anyone party of record, opponent testimony? Anyone that signed up in opposition? All right, Planning Commission?
Again, Carla Yanoz for the record with Planning Commission staff. Subject site is located in the residential 12 and office commercial 20 future land use on the map. However, it is pending a concurrent CPA under HCCPA 24-05 for changing the future land use category to completely office commercial 20. Now, the site is located within the urban service area and is within the limits of the Greater Carrollwood-Northdale Community Plan. The intent of the office commercial 20 category is to recognize existing commercial and office centers and provide for future development opportunities. The office commercial 20 surrounds the subject site on all sides, and the proposed rezoning meets the intent of the OC 20 future land use category. It is anticipated in the use that the future land use category with a floor area ratio of 0.22, the proposed site plan is well below the maximum FAR of 0.75. So the intent of the RES 12 future land use category is to designate areas that are suitable for medium-density residential, as well as urban-scale neighborhood commercial, office, and multipurpose projects and mixed use. So the subject site, since it's associated with 24, HCCPA 24-05, to change that future land use designation, the Planning Commission is, has recommended that the application be found consistent with, at their April 8, 2024, public hearing. Now, the request does include an affordable housing density bonus as outlined in the housing section of the comprehensive plan. If the amendment to OC 20, which is 20 dwelling units, a gross acre is approved, the affordable housing density bonus would include a consideration of up to 35 dwelling units per the gross acre. So with 2.83 acres, a site could be considered for up to 99 dwelling units if all the bonus criteria is met. Now, on April 5, 2024, the Hillsborough County Affordable Housing Services Department did provide some documentation certifying that the proposal is eligible for the affordable housing density bonus based on that criteria outlined in the housing section of the comprehensive plan. So based on those considerations, and after reviewing the site plan and overall the request, the Planning Commission staff is finding, recommending that the proposed plan amendment, a planned development be found consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, and subject to the conditions imposed by Development Services.
Hearing master.
The hearing master considered the requested rezoning of the subject property to planned development to allow a development of 99 multifamily dwelling units with an affordable housing density bonus to achieve 35 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has requested a comprehensive plan amendment 2405 concurrently to amend the property's future land use designation to residential 20. The applicant has requested a PD variation from LDC Part 6.06 landscaping irrigation and buffering requirements to reduce the required buffering and screening requirements, and that was found to be supportable. The zoning hearing master found that the The zoning hearing master found that the proposed plan development is consistent with the requirements of the code and with the comprehensive plan, provided that CPA 2405 is approved. And subject to that approval of CPA 2405, the recommendation to ZHM was for approval.
Commissioner Cohen?
I just wanted to say that I think this map amendment is totally compatible with that stretch of Florida Avenue, and I think this looks like an excellent project, and I'm going to be happy to support it. And I'll move approval.
Second.
And we got a motion to approve CPA 2402 by Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I do believe that finally this is one location that does make absolute sense. It's on two of our most heavy ridership, heart routes, and increasing that critical density on those routes will hopefully increase our opportunity to increase the frequency of those routes, which will just increase sustainability of heart and for those that really rely on that public transportation. So I'll thank the applicant for finding this location for our community. Thank you.
Commissioner Kemp?
Thank you, and I think it's excellent location for this. We can't ever increase the frequency until we get more money for heart. That's the problem, just saying. But maybe someday there'll be more money for heart. But in terms of that, too, I really appreciate the comment about the flex, because I do think this board will regret the decision that was made before with regards to that. But I appreciate it, and I think this is a good project, and I'm all in.
All right, please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, now can we have a vote on the rezoning?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Cohen, second Commissioner Myers. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, next item.
Next item is CPA 2402, which will be presented by Alexis Myers.
Good evening, commissioners, Alexis Myers, planning commission staff. I'm here to present HCCPA 2402, located at 7200 Causeway Boulevard. This is a privately initiated small-scale map amendment that is approximately 4.2 acres. The request is to change the site's future land use category from residential nine to residential 20. This is a general location map. It is within the urban service area and falls within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan. Here we have the area of the site, and the site is outlined in pink. It's located on the north side of Causeway Boulevard between South 72nd Street and Hermosa Drive. It currently contains heavy commercial uses. Light industrial uses are located to the immediate west. Single-family uses extend to the northeast, north, and northwest. Light commercial and vacant uses are located to the west as well, and then to the south across Causeway Boulevard are heavy industrial, light industrial, and heavy commercial uses. Okay, here we have a few pictures of the site. Here is a site from Causeway Boulevard. Then we have another view of the site from the southern boundary of the site. Here is a view of the south 72nd Street looking north. And then for the last photo, we have a view from the northern portion of the site. Okay, so currently, the site's future land use designation is residential nine. Residential nine extends to the northwest and east. To the south is the office commercial 20 future land use category. And then we have residential six, I'm sorry, which is further south. Again, the applicant is requesting the change to future land use designation to residential 20. Overall, the proposed change would allow for an increase in the amount of non-residential development and maximum allowable dwelling units. Planning commission staff have reviewed the application and has found that the request is consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. Future land use element policy 1.4 requires new development to be compatible with the surrounding area. The proposed comprehensive plan amendment to RES 20 is compatible with this policy direction. Flu Objective 7 and each of its accompanying policies establish the future land use map, as well as the allowable ranges of uses for each future land use category. Additionally, the proposed change is consistent with policy direction on future land use, I'm sorry, on future land use categories. The request would allow for compatible development within the residential neighborhood on the north side of Causeway Boulevard. The proposal also meets the intents of Flu Objective 16 and its accompanying policies, 16.1, 16.2, 16.3, and 16.10, which require new development, infill, and redevelopment to be compatible with the surrounding area in character, lot size, and density. Lastly, the proposed change would allow for development that is consistent with the community design component. Objective 12.1, I'm sorry, 12-1 of the community design component requires new development to complement the surrounding land uses and be designed in a way that is compatible. The proposed density and intensity increase are similar to the surrounding development pattern. The request is also consistent with the Greater Palm River Community Plan, as goal 5A of the plan seeks to promote and provide for opportunities for compatible, well-designed public uses, residential development, business growth, and jobs. Overall, the planning commission recommends that the proposed map amendment be found consistent with the goals, objectives, and policies of the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan. And this ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Applicant here. Good evening.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Nicole Nugavare McKinnis.
You're good.
Hi, Commissioner. My name is Nicole Nugavare McKinnis. I'm a land use attorney over at Sterns Weaver here in Tampa. Alexis did a great job, so I will save my comments on the comp plan until the PD rezoning application that's right behind this. Thank you.
All right, thank you. It's a public hearing. Anyone like to speak to this item? All right, we will hold off voting on the CPA till after the rezoning. This time, anyone that's going to speak during the rezoning, please stand and raise your right hand so the clerk can swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Do. Mr. Grady?
The next portion of the agenda item, the rezoning petition for item B4, is a rezoning application 24-0242. The request is to rezone a 4.2 acre parcel from RSC 9 and commercial general to a planned development. The request is for 90 multifamily dwelling units. Again, the parcel is located on the north side of Causeway Boulevard, west of 78th Street. Again, 90 units, the proposal for 90 units with affordable housing density bonus. From a compatibility standpoint, the applicant has shown sensitivity to the existing single-family homes that are located in the north and northeast of the property by locating the building along the frontage of Causeway Boulevard with the transitioning to the rear with parking and retention. Based on the site design of the project, staff is recommending approval. Subject to the comprehensive plan amendment to the RES 20 plan category, planning mission also found it consistent, and the hearing officer recommended approval. Staff's available for any questions. Thank you.
All right, applicant, come back. Applicant?
Good evening, commissioners. Nicole Nugavare McKinnis. I'm a land use attorney over at Sterns Weaver here in Tampa. My address is 401 East Jackson Street for the record. Here today, representing Blue Sky Communities in connection with a really exciting affordable housing project located in Palm River. We do have our engineer here from our applicant team if you have any specific questions. He has been an engineer on many of the Blue Sky projects, so we're well-versed in these types of projects here in Hillsborough County. A little bit about Blue Sky. Blue Sky is located in St. Pete. They're founded in 2012. Real estate developers specializing in small-scale apartment communities. Blue Sky, unlike many other developers, is actually the long-term owner and operator of their communities, and all of their developments are managed in-house. Here are pictures of a few other Blue Sky community projects that are here in Hillsborough County. So moving forward specifically to this project, this property is located at 7200 Causeway Boulevard here in Tampa. It is west of Highway 301, north of Causeway Boulevard, east of US Highway 41, and south of Palm River Road. It's approximately 4.2 acres currently in the urban service area, and the current use is heavy commercial. A little bit about the future land use for this property. So it is within the RES 9 future land use category. When you see in this area, there is a sea of OC 20 to the south. There is also several RES 20 properties over to the east. Those were approved by the board in 2017 and 2018. They are currently multifamily market rate projects. Current zoning for the property, as staff mentioned, this is a split zoning that has the commercial general category to the southern side of the property and then RSC 9 to the north. So like I said, there is a companion comp plan amendment for this application. We took this to Hillsborough County Planning Commission. Several of the commissioners remarked that this was an easy one, a perfect transition to get industrial out of this neighborhood to the north, and the easiest one of the night. So specifically looking at the site plan for this project, so we are requesting 90 affordable housing units, which will be a density of 21.43 units per acre. The access at DOT's request will only be off of 72nd Street, right along the southern boundary. It's circled right there in purple. The maximum height of this project is four stories or 50 feet. There will be a 20-foot type B buffer along the northeast and west sides. We're also proposing significant setbacks, especially to the north. We did have a community meeting. We had a couple of neighbors come out from the north, and they wanted to make sure this project was not going to be located all over the property. We were very sensitive to that in the design, and so that is why the building footprint, which is here in red, is pushed all the way up against Causeway Boulevard. We then have parking, and then we have a large stormwater area, so we provide a lot of distance separation between this project and the single-family homes to the north. A little bit about the affordable housing density bonus. So we are requesting this bonus, which in our, if the comp plan is approved, would allow up to 35 units to the acre. However, we are only requesting 21.43 units to the acre. As you all know, with the affordable housing density bonus, a portion of the units are restricted to 80% of AMI and below. This project will be entirely restricted to 80% of AMI and below. I know this board has discussed affordable housing at length in recent months, so this is different than other types of affordable housing that may be a higher AMI category. Looking around to the properties around us, to the north, there is property in the RSC 9 district. South is CG. West and east, we're seeing CG and more RSC 9. As far as daily change with our traffic, this will be a net reduction for the property of about 4,500 trips. In the AM peak hour, it is 353 trip reduction, and in the PM peak hour, it's a 434 trip reduction. We are requesting one variation related to parking for this project. One of the unique things about affordable housing is that typically the tenants do not earn an income to allow them to have more than one car. So when we have codes that require multiple cars per unit, it doesn't really meet the intent of affordable housing or necessarily serve that purpose. So that is why we are requesting this waiver. There are going to be at least 40 bicycle parking spaces on this property. The property will be restricted to affordable housing for at least the next 50 years, and there are also bus stops that are about half a mile away. There's two of them. One's a little under half a mile. Your code actually says that a reasonable distance to travel to a bus stop is one mile, so we are providing two within that distance. We are located in the Greater Palm River Community Plan. We are consistent with several goals, objectives, and strategies from here, from encouraging new infill redevelopment to ensuring that we're having well-designed, compatible projects, and that we're not having any commercial intensive uses east of Maydell Drive. So we did have a planning commission finding of consistency with the comprehensive plan. We're within the urban service area. We're consistent with the Greater Palm River Plan. It's a similar and complementary use to around the area, and we are providing a project that's protecting the existing neighborhood, again, by that significant setback. We do have staff recommendation of approval for the project. We also have zoning hearing master recommendation of approval. We didn't have any concerns at that community meeting. So far, we have everyone recommending approval of this project, and so we'd request your approval. I'm here if you have any questions. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I don't believe there are any parties of record, but any proponent testimony? Any opponent testimony? My planning commission?
Alexis Myers, planning commission. The approximately 4.2 subject site is located north of Causeway Boulevard, east of south 72nd Street, and west of Hermosa Drive. The site is located in the urban service area and is within the limits of the Greater Palm River Community Plan. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from residential, single-family, conventional, and commercial general to planned development for 90 affordable multifamily housing units. The proposal meets the intent of Objective 1 and Policy 1.4 of the future land use element of the comprehensive plan by providing residential use within the urban service area, where 80% of future growth is to be directed. The proposal meets the compatibility requirements of Flu Policy 1.4, as the character of the area contains similar residential uses along the north side of Causeway Boulevard. The applicant is also requesting to be considered for an affordable housing density bonus, which increases the allowable number of dwelling units per acre from 20 to 35. The proposed total of 90 units is approximately 21.43 units per acre. With approval of the pending CPA and the affordable housing density bonus applied, the proposal is consistent with Objective 8 and its associated policies. Flu Objective 16 and its associated neighborhood protection policies seeks compatible development within and around established neighborhoods. The proposal is consistent with Flu Objective 16.2 and 16.3, as it provides an adequate transition and buffer area on the north side of the subject site. The location of the stormwater pond on the north side allows for an adequate transition between the single-family uses north of the site and the proposed four-story multifamily building on the southern portion of the site. The proposed density increase is compatible with the surrounding area and is therefore consistent with Flu Policy 16.10 as well. The request is also consistent with the policy directions established by the Greater Palm River Community Plan, and is therefore consistent with the livable communities element. Based on those considerations, planning commission staff finds that the proposed plan of development consistent with the unincorporated Hillsborough County Comprehensive Plan, subject to conditions proposed by the Development Services Department. Thank you.
Thank you. Hearing master?
The zoning hearing master considered the applicant's request to rezone the subject property to planned development to allow development of 90 multifamily dwelling units with an affordable housing density bonus to allow for the achievement of 21.43 dwelling units per acre. The applicant has requested a comprehensive plan amendment, CPA 2402, concurrently with this proposed rezoning, to amend the subject property's future land use designation to residential 20. The applicant requested a PD variation from LDC Part 6.05.00 Parking and Loading to reduce the required minimum number of parking spaces from 172 to 126 spaces. The PD variation was found to be supportable. The zoning hearing master concluded that the proposed planned development rezoning is consistent with the comprehensive plan and compliant with the Land Code, and made this recommendation for approval based on the condition of approval of CPA 2402, the comprehensive plan amendment that it's paired with.
Commissioner Kemp?
I'll move approval. Were you finding out? Do we move approval for the?
This is CPA right now.
Yeah, okay. So I'll move approval. I think it's a good project.
Okay, motion by Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers, Commissioner Wostel.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, Mr. Gormley, same question. It's the same answer, right, of the other item?
Yes.
Okay, and it's RES 9 to RES 35. Now, they're saying they're only going to do 21, but there's no stipulations or guarantees in that, right?
It's going to RES 20, the plan amendment.
The zoning is limited to a maximum of 90 units if they develop with the affordable housing bonus. In the event they don't...
If they develop with the affordable housing bonus, in the event they don't, the zoning will have less units, less units approved. It will be the future land use category multiplied by the density. So either way, there will not be a higher number of units without the affordable density bonus being, without the affordable housing element being provided.
So this is those, I don't like these bonuses. I've mentioned that in the past, but it's just not transparent. So they can't come back in, and right now it says 21.28 or something on the slide. So they won't be able to come in and make that all the way to 35, though, right? It's a hard cap at the 90?
It is a hard cap based on what their zoning is requesting. If they wanted, if there was a desire to try to amend that, they would need to come back before the board and make that, make that case and request a change. There's no, if the board acts on the zoning and the plan amendment today, I'm sorry, just zoning at this point, it'll be a hard cap at 90 with potentially lower if it's not an affordable housing project.
Okay. Okay, please accord your vote on the adoption of CPA 2402.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, now can we have a motion on the rezoning?
So moved.
Motion, Commissioner Kemp, second Commissioner Myers. No comments. Please accord your vote.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Okay. With that, we're adjourned. Thank you.